Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023 Business Meeting, oh, nope, Work Study Session of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with council member partially tuning in remotely, as well as our city manager is going to be zooming in or is zooming in, but we've got it handled here with our assistant city managers and the rest of us. So we only have one item on tonight's agenda, and that is to hear a briefing on the Olympia Downtown Alliance Downtown Improvement District, or DID, process. And just for some context, this is, for some of us that have been on the council for more than a few years, we've heard this presentation before COVID. And it was on a trajectory to, you know, becoming a reality. And then we had, of course, the pandemic. And so we are pleased that the ODA is revisiting this conversation and that we have them here and some of the representatives this evening, as well as our own Mike Reed, who is our Economic Development Director. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Reed to tee up the conversation.
Great. Thank you all. So tonight, we will be going over the Downtown Improvement District. I want to introduce some of our guests that we have here tonight. So we have Todd Cutts, who is the Executive Director for the Olympia Downtown Alliance, Matt DeBord, who's one of the co-chairs for the Downtown Improvement District. He is with Heritage or with, ooh, geez, you almost got me, Timberland Bank. And we've got Ron Thomas, who's a co-chair with Thomas Architecture Studio. I also did want to acknowledge some of our guests that we also have. We have Melissa Hammond, who is the co-chair of the, or not the co-chair, she's the chair of the PBIA and owner of the Brotherhood and Labor Temple. And I think I just saw Patty Belmonte with the Hands-on Children's Museum, who is also a member of the Steering Committee for the DID, joined us as well. So with that, I'm going to give a preface to the conversation, and then ultimately, I'm going to hand the keys over to you, Todd, and company to drive the rest of the way. So, little context setting. So as the mayor mentioned, a number of you have seen some of this presentation before, and I think three, I think it was council member Madrone, council member Payne, and council member Quinn, you joined after, all after 2020, right? Or 2020?
I had one study session.
On this, okay. All right. So tonight, we are, there are two questions that I just want you to have in mind. You are not answering them tonight. But I think that as you're getting the presentation and you're hearing the content, I want to make sure that you're thinking about these questions, because this is ultimately what's going to need to be answered later. So the question number one is, would we, as a property owner in the district, want to opt in as a paying member of the district? So this question can be answered at any, really at any time, but giving the answer earlier than later can have an impact on pursuing petition signers. So what I'm saying there is, if we're holding out, indicating which way we want to go with this, as they're trying to pursue petition getters, it can be challenging. People may be saying, well, which side of the city on? Is the city supportive of this? And if we are agnostic or absent with an answer on that, it will lead, it will lead to some questions that they won't know how to answer. So I just want to put that out there. The second question is, will we accept the petition results and authorize the Downtown Improvement District? That question can only be answered after we have a public hearing. So you can't, don't answer that question now. You can't answer that question now. We have a public hearing. We will develop an ordinance. Now theoretically, you could say yes to one and then no to the other, because maybe you hear something at the public hearing that changes your mind. Or maybe you say yes to one, or you say no to the first one, and then you change your mind when the vote comes and we do something later. They are not mutually exclusive, but you can, and I understand that there may be a wrestling with, if we answer yes to one, are people are going to perceive that we're automatically going to say yes to two? I think that that's a fair question to wrestle with. So, oh, I'm losing something. How did I? Oh, that's, okay. So I want to be able to put those questions in front of you now, as you're thinking about this and contemplating this. And we can work with you on how and when to answer those questions. Okay. So, moving along. So into the, sort of the heart of the presentation, where I really want to set the framework for this is, a lot of this effort, and a lot of the city's efforts associated with the downtown are deeply grounded in our downtown strategy. That downtown strategy was created in 2017 through a significant amount of public process and outreach and stakeholder buy-in and so on. That, the downtown strategy really, it was the community's voice on what their vision is for downtown. And then we marry the community's voice up with the tools that we have at our disposal to be able to bring that forward. The downtown strategy makes very clear, we cannot implement all of this on our own. There are things in here that we just cannot do. So partnership, and the term partnership is referenced in the downtown strategy quite a bit. So, and I won't go through what each of those means. They're pretty self-apparent. But downtown is evolving. And this is, this was true in 2019, when we had this conversation last time, and it continues to be true. We have seen a significant amount of public investment into downtown. We, as the city, have led a lot of public investment into downtown. Over the last 15 years, I can think of a number of significant projects and investments that we have made. A lot of that was really to set the table to encourage private investment to follow. I think that there's the mantra in economic development, a lot of the times is, you make good public investments so that better private investment can follow your lead. And so we've done a lot of that into downtown, and I do think it is making an impact. We've continued to make these improvements. And the big thing, I think, that we're really also aiming at is we're trying to advance our downtown while keeping the fabric of downtown that we love intact. There is a, there is a flavor to downtown that we, as Olympians, we cherish. It's uniqueness, it's steadfast commitment to local and the entrepreneurial spirit and its creativity. So we've been evolving while we're hanging on to that very critical value. The downtown improvement, or the downtown strategy has some retail priorities associated in it as well, that don't always get referenced at the same top line as the previous comments or the previous bullets that we had about the downtown strategy. So these were pulled out of the downtown strategy that I wanted to sort of highlight, because I do think that as you hear more about the downtown improvement district, you're going to see some synergy between their work. So one of the issues that the downtown strategy really did talk about, and it's still something that we are actively working on today, is improving the identity and perception of downtown within Thurston County. And actually, even beyond Thurston County. It is a significant tourism draw. So we knew when we were developing that downtown strategy, that that first bullet there is a critically important component of our work. We want to continue to actively promote tourism. We want to strengthen the existing and local businesses. That really is deeply rooted in that value that we have associated with. We have a number of well-established, locally-created, locally-owned entrepreneurs in our downtown, and doing things to strengthen those businesses here. And that's where we've justified our investments in things like Scale Up and Tune Up and Enterprise for Equity and the Northwest Cooperative Development Center and the different programming that we have had there. We talk a lot in that plan about improving streetscapes. So just the feeling of downtown, as you're walking down the street, what does that look like? What does that feel like? Our investments in Franklin Street and on Legion, and our continued investments on flower baskets through the PBIA and pressure washing that we just committed to doing more of at the council meeting a couple of nights ago. And then we want to encourage more residents into our downtown. That is called out in the downtown strategy and our comprehensive plan. And we want to connect to other community and economic development efforts. So currently, we also have a parking business improvement area, which we refer to as the PBIA. It is different than what you will be hearing tonight. And I think, Todd, you might get into some of that, but it is also in the staff report. Our PBIA is a business assessment, as opposed to a property assessment. So there are some unique differences between those two. Some would see positives, some would see negatives, challenges, opportunities, whatever it may be. Right now, because we are a business-based assessment, we have to monitor the number of businesses that we have, when they come in, when they open, when they close. That's actually not as easy of a task as you would think. Folks do not send us a letter saying, I've closed. They just close. We don't also have the ability to do the kind of sorting to be notified very specifically when someone opens up downtown and what kind of business that they have, and how many people they have, or the various formulas associated with the PBIA. So it is pretty staff-intensive to manage a property improvement area, or a business improvement area. As opposed to a property one, you would just get the tax roll from the county, and it would show you who owns property. And when it changes hand, the liability then changes hands, too. We currently, I think, have 476 that actually may be up from that. And our annual budget is around $100,000. Kind of does some of that a little bit. We do use the PBIA budget in a number of different ways, but one of the largest contributors, they are one of the largest contributors to the Downtown Ambassador Program, and they contribute to our flower baskets. So those are two pretty significant projects that do get funded from there. They do support events and sponsorships. We've got the mural campaign. And lately, I would say in the last four years, there's actually been a lot of effort between the PBIA and the ODA to do some joint projects. One of the challenges that we have had from a staffing perspective is, PBIA will come up with some great ideas. We, as a staff, don't always have the capacity to implement all of those ideas. And then the PBIA is able to then subcontract or contract that work to the ODA. So things like watering the flower baskets has been a new one. Coordinating, putting up the various alley lighting, those are examples of joint projects. And then this is, I have the rare instance of being sort of the bad cop in this conversation. Usually, I'm coming in with very joyous, buoyant sort of self. This one is not good. But Todd's going to show a slide that will expand on this a little bit later, but I wanted to really hit home something. So the blue line is foot traffic downtown in 2019. So the last time we were having this conversation is the blue line. And what you can see, and this is actually, it's a geo-fencing software that we now have, and it is tracking cellphone activity by people walking in a geographic area of downtown. And so I've got a parameter set for downtown. And you can see, running along the bottom are the weeks of the year. So week 51 is the second to the last week of the year. So you can kind of see what our foot traffic looks like. That's, so blue line is 2019. And red line, if you can guess, is 2020, when we sent everybody home. And you can see, that's a cliff. And it didn't really come back up in 2019. But Todd will show you where we're at today. So I just, I will hand off, because the first part of Todd's presentation is more of this data about downtown, and then he'll move into a conversation about the downtown improvement district. So with that, presentation is yours.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Procedure, Earl. Do you want questions as we go, or do you want to wait? Because I can manage either way.
I think most of the questions are going to be to you, so I'll let you answer.
Always open to questions. I will say the presentation's pretty meaty, so there may be answers, you know, to your questions in the presentation.
Is that right? So just wait?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Cheryl. I'm going to give just a little intro to this. A couple of things were mentioned. Partnership, that is what this is all about. The city is one of our critical partners. But excitement, you could hear it in Mike's voice, and you're going to hear it in ours this evening. This is all about excitement, and it's about a vision for the future. The downtown strategy, that's speaking aspirationally about what we want to see. That takes money. And Mike said accurately, the city cannot fund all of the city, is funding a lot already. This is about leveraging what the city is doing a good job on already. Give you a little example. Over the last two years, there has been some money that's flowed through the city, and it actually has flowed eventually to ODA. They were a good partner in executing some of these services. And I think people is like, wow, look at the festival lighting. Wow, it just, there's a lot of things that have had a noticeable impact. It's very positive. What's happening to that funding is going away. It's just, it's not continuing. That's where this helps tremendously. Cheryl mentioned, we were here two and a half years ago, ramping this thing up, right before the pandemic, getting it down. What you're going to see tonight is not the same presentation. And I'll explain why. We've been at this now for eight months in 2023, well, 2022 to 2023, and we've listened from clearback two and a half years ago to current, from business owners, large and small. We've already been reaching out to PBIA. How can we tweak things? What about the amount of assessment? We even, the actual rate actually went down a bit because our property values have climbed up and up. We've had a lot of projects that have finished. Matt's financed them. Thank you. We've designed and built a lot of them, developed them, and it has an impact, a positive impact on us. But it wasn't enough, because we actually, just a few weeks ago, actually notched down. So the amount that you're going to see tonight is actually a little bit below what our target was. Why? It's more important that we pass this, not at what we think is the right amount. We need to have the right amount for the right service. Todd's going to speak to this in great detail. But just know, we're listening. We're listening to all of the potential ratepayers. We want to see this thing pass. It's time to get it done. I will reiterate, your support is important. Sooner rather than later, Matt has been sending out wonderful targeted emails to get some of our largest ratepayers on board right now. We have got to send a strong message, because I was meeting with somebody Friday evening, and there are less than 1% like I am in terms of property ownership. They, they need to be on board. We need to send the message to other people who are smaller business owners like me. And so I hope you enjoy this this evening. If you do have questions that are just burning, go ahead and ask them. But like Todd said, there's just a lot of information in this. It's really well thought through. So with that, Todd, if you could walk us through.
Thanks, Ron. I think I'm in the right room for people that enjoy conversations about assessments. Is that in the right place? Okay. So appreciate your time. Again, it's been a few years, and obviously, we've had this conversation. We are excited to revisit it. And just, you know, I do want to clarify, my role here, the Olympia Downtown Alliance's role here, essentially, I'm kind of like executive on loan to the DID Steering Committee. So the DID Steering Committee with the property owners, and the property owners ultimately are the ones that are going to have to support the Downtown Improvement District. There is a relationship that we'll talk about between the Downtown Improvement District, Olympia Downtown Alliance, and the city of Olympia. And we'll go through that. So Mike mentioned some key indicators. So I know as council members, I know in my role as Executive Director of the Downtown Association, oh, is that a bad sign? We, we all hear from our stakeholders, you know, our fellow Olympians about the state of downtown and what's going on downtown, anecdotally, otherwise, out at the grocery store, you know, coffee shop, et cetera. I've been thinking and working on putting some numbers to, what do the numbers say about it? And they're not everything, but they help to inform kind of the direction that we're going. So first of all, just want to talk about the business comings and goings over the last few years. We track this through our Main Street accreditation. So we are accredited Main Street organization. We turn in quarterly statistics. So the ambassadors and our downtown guides and Mike help us track these numbers. So you see, 2018, the math is wrong, first of all, but, so we had 27 openings, 25 closings for a net gain of two businesses. We had a net loss of three businesses in 19, and then predictably in 20, we lost more businesses than that with eight. I would argue, though, if you would have, you know, told us that we'd be coming up a pandemic, we would have thought we would have lost a lot more than that, and the net loss would have been a lot worse. Recovery in 2021, so a net gain of 16 businesses and 12 businesses respectively in 2022. So 28 new businesses downtown net openings in the last two years. So something for us to feel good about, something for you to take back to your constituents as well, I think, when we're talking about downtown. So Mike touched on downtown investments as well. So over the last five years, this is something we track as well for our Main Street numbers. We've seen a public investment of $14.5 million, and that can be anything from the Great Franklin Street Project to installing new traffic lights and standards downtown. So kind of up and down the line. A huge number for private investment downtown, a five-year total of $74 million during that time. And we continue to see that investment coming downtown. I don't expect you to read all this, but this is a map that the city recently put together. And as you can see, new developments really dot the landscape. It continues to be exciting time down here. And we're starting to feel, I think, foundationally, that energy in downtown. And I actually think at some level, our new residents down here helped us foundationally to get through the pandemic as they frequented downtown businesses. So this is the same software that Mike mentioned. This is the visit trends number, and we have added year-to-date 2023 with the blue line there, and 2022 with the red line. As you could see, you know, to Mike's point, we are still not to 2019 numbers in terms of the visits that we're seeing downtown. We, you know, did see an increase in 2022, predictably over, over 2020. I think with these data points, we could only capture four of them. So unfortunately, 2021 is not in there. But we saw, you know, increase from 2020 to 2022, so feel good about that. We are tracking up in 2023, but we're still not at those 2019 numbers. So from a downtown vibrancy perspective, we capture some data from a survey we've done twice annually, and we plan to do in 2023 as well, in our downtown stakeholder survey. You also have a survey, your community survey, and I understand that you're in the middle of it right now. So we're all waiting to see, you know, what those numbers look like. But accessing the 2020 and kind of bled over, I think, into 2021, community survey numbers all the way to the left, the downtown stakeholder survey numbers in 21, and then 22, as you move to the right. So it's a little bit apples to oranges, in that yours is a statistically valid survey, put out to residents from professional, you know, survey firm. So ours is downtown stakeholders only. So that's property owners, it's business owners, nonprofits, et cetera, stakeholders in our downtown. We push it out to both our membership and just to stakeholders more broadly downtown. So as you can see here, the yellow line is the, the right track, wrong direction number. In 2020, 2021, the community said, 21% of them said downtown's going in the right direction, which conversely means 79% said we're going in the wrong direction, was, which frankly, is, your downtown director is a terrifying number, and something obviously we need to focus on. So for, for our stakeholders who are living and breathing it down here, in 2021, we heard 49% of them said they're going on the right track. And for those who've talked to me, you know, when I first saw that number, I went, hey, 49%, and then I went, wait, 49%, that's not good for our own stakeholders downtown to feel like, not even half of them are feeling like we're going in the right direction. Fast forward to 2022, we're at 66%, which frankly, still isn't good enough. But feel like the trend line, the trajectory is going in the right direction, and that's something that we need to continue. From a safety perspective, there was a question about safety during the day and safety during the night. Same, we used the same question as the city used on their survey. 59% of the community said they're feeling safe during the day, and that's very safe and somewhat safe aggregated. 75% of our stakeholders felt that way, and 84% in 2022. So again, trend line going in the right direction. Safety at night, tougher number, 24% of the entire community, 27% in 2021 of our stakeholders, and then 38% in 2022. Cleanliness, even a lower number for us. So those that felt like downtown was very clean to somewhat clean, 24%. This specific question wasn't asked in the city survey in 2020, in 2021. 24% in 2021, up to 31. So feeling better, moving in the right direction. And that really, for me, is the segue to the Downtown Improvement District, and kind of the case of, we need to continue to, as Ron mentioned, partner with the city, leverage all the great services that the city's already putting out there, and supply more services to our community, to our downtown. So going through the DID, what is the DID? It's really a financing mechanism, providing revenue for downtown services. And want to make the point very clearly, these would enhance, but not replace, existing municipal services. And this slide, as much as anything, is geared to our property owners who are asking that question. Does that mean the city won't be providing services anymore? We are working, and I think we're close to a base level of service agreement with the city. We had one back in 2019, 2020, kind of outlining here all the services that the city provides. And as a result of the Downtown Improvement District, those aren't going to go away. Now, there are caveats there with city budget, et cetera, and we all understand that. But as a result of the DID, the city's saying those won't go away. It's self-initiated. The Downtown Improvement District has to be supported by private sector property owners and businesses. And, you know, one of the points that we make as well is, we are competing as a downtown, and we're competing with other downtowns, but certainly within our area, we're competing with the mall, we're competing with lifestyle centers, we're competing with strip centers, privately-held real estate downtown. And we need to be competitive with them. That doesn't mean that we want to lose who we are and the character of our downtown. But when our community, we see numbers about cleanliness and safety, and, you know, feeling like we need to improve in those areas, we're feeling like the Downtown Improvement District can help with that, and certainly does for property assessment districts across the country, across North America. So DID's been around a long time, since the 60s, more than 1,000 throughout North America. So this isn't a new thing. We're not making this up. It is the same underlying state legislation as the PBIA. Really, DID's property assessment district started with a focus on clean and safe services, diversified into other services since then. Most of you know, I worked for assessment districts or downtown associations funded by assessment districts in downtown Long Beach, California, downtown Denver. So really part of, you know, more sophisticated downtown management organizations at this point. Case studies in, in the state of Washington, there are 10 actually, in Seattle alone. They're in Everett, they're in Tacoma, Yakima, Spokane, and I have some of my Main Street counterparts that are administering in those cities, too. You know, analogous college towns, state capitals. So in terms of who's steering the ship for, you know, Ron mentioned the type of services, the assessments, et cetera, it is the DID Steering Committee, and I'm staff in that committee. So you have the co-chairs in front of you here. You've got a member of the Steering Committee in Patty Belmonte, Derek Harris from Community Services, Melissa Hammond recently joined as co-chair of the PBIA in Brotherhood and Labor Temple, got Ole Fed, Ole Press Building and Ole Rents, Ruth Ann, I think it's like, is like Prince, I think it's just Ruth Ann, from trees. Pat Rants from the Rants Group, managed a lot of property downtown in terms of city council representation, council member partially. We've got two Mike Reeds, so the Mike Reed sitting next to me, and Mike Reed from KBJ Investments, Steve Cooper's partner. All you know Steve. OSPI is on the committee, also Shannon Teigs, who is also a member of the PBIA's Advisory Committee, and then Jesse Wilson from Urban Olympia. So I am not going to read this slide to you. The point of the slide is, there was a lot of process that took place in 2019 and 2020. So from meetings, you know, in this room with you all, to meetings with the PBIA, with our property owner community, business community, stakeholder outreaches overall, open houses, that sort of thing. with our property owner community, business community, stakeholder outreaches overall, open houses, that sort of thing. These are more meetings that we held in two thousand twenty. Pandemic paused the project in in March of two thousand twenty. So we had a couple work sessions with the city council. We also had a meeting with the Finance Committee of the City Council. So, you know, through two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty three, Matt Ron and I were continuing to check in and, you know, at intermittent times, kind of taking the pulse of our property owner community downtown to understand if the time was right to continue to have that conversation, given the uncertainty in the marketplace, uncertainty everywhere, property owners weren't comfortable with that. We finally reached that place in fall of two thousand twenty two, and we kind of reconstituted the D I D Steering Committee. And we've been working on updates to the operational plan and the budget of the D I D and doing outreach to stakeholders. So here's what we have upcoming, and actually, one of those has happened. So the P B I, we had a great conversation with them, May third. Here we are tonight. We are planning an open house for stakeholders, probably mid to late June. And then it gets, you know, as we go further out, there's a little more fluidity to the timeline. But come back to the Finance Committee, we will be looking for the P B I's recommendation to form the D I D. We did gain that last time around in in two thousand twenty. Council meeting, city council action, and, you know, we've been talking about what that looks like. And that's kind of, you know, part of that first action that Mike referenced in his slides. The petition campaign, which we think roughly will take about eight weeks, and then submission to the city, September, October, depending on all those factors above. And then it would come to the council to approve the ordinance. The public hearing was also mentioned somewhere in that October through December timeframe. D I D buildings and operations commence. Once upon a time, I had that number January first, two thousand twenty four, but as the timeline becomes more fluid, we're still hopeful, but we're saying first quarter, two thousand twenty four. So just the outline of what I'll be going through. So objectives of the D I D, advocacy leadership services, really focused on improving the downtown experience for our community, cleanliness, supporting the safety, welcoming environment. We've got more involved organizationally in placemaking, activating public places, and really excited about some of the projects we've taken on in partnership with the P B I, the the alley lighting. We've lit eleven different alley segments downtown with the resources from that partnership with the P B I and the city as an example. So helping support our small businesses downtown, we'll continue to do that. I've got a slide later on about our board makeup at the Downtown Alliance. It's largely, the majority of our board members are small business owners downtown as well. Tracking new investment, enhancing property values, increasing occupancy downtown. And the governance structure allows property owners and business owners, as you'll see, to engage in the conversation and help drive the direction of the the D I D in the future. So boundaries, so the purple is the core, the green is the noncore. The the purple would pay twice as much as the green and receive a commensurate level of service as paying twice as much. And, you know, this is really kind of a, some some math here, some, you know, relationships, conversations. You'll see the bottom section of the map, kind of southwest section. We reached out to a lot of property owners the first go around, did not get broad support in that area and respected that and didn't push that forward and and took those off the map. You do see, you know, more residential in that area. Just historically, this is, last time we were in front of you, the conversation was around, so you see two, P B I presentation that we made, we had four hundred and twenty five thousand dedicated to clean and safe, assisting small businesses at forty five, and then management, which included reserves and was full, reserves were folded into that at ninety thousand. When we included the city and the port in that number, we bumped up the assisting small businesses line item and the management line item, including the reserves, and the overall to six hundred thousand. So this is the number that we're currently working with. So as we all know, along with the pandemic, came an inflationary environment and some of those hard costs that in order to deliver the services that we're saying we're going to deliver to stakeholders from a safety and cleanliness perspective in that inflationary environment went up. And so that number went from four hundred and twenty five thousand to five hundred thousand. The assisting small businesses number we have at seventy eight, one twenty five. And talk about what each one of these is. Management, so that is the Downtown Alliance's oversight, as well as, you know, procurement of insurance, office space, machines, technology, et cetera. Reserves, we have built into this budget, and our our Steering Committee had a good conversation about really the the feel for the need to do that. So that's at two and a half percent per year with the goal of twenty five percent in reserves after the ten year term of the district. So from a assessment methodology perspective, you'll recall, so it is a blend of frontage. So that's sidewalk in front of buildings or vacant lots and assessed value. So that frontage is is fixed essentially. So we painstakingly, back in two thousand nineteen, went into the assessor's database, and they have a map measuring tool, and measured every single parcel downtown. And the assessed value is a little bit easier in that the the county assessor's office puts that together. We pulled down the database in November of two thousand twenty two and applied these numbers. Do you have residential at seventy five percent of commercial and nonprofit, which does include government at fifty percent of commercial? I mentioned earlier that the noncore is half of of the core. So one of the slides that we felt like it was important to to put in the the P B I presentation and to talk about tonight was the impact of small businesses. You know, as our board members are a lot of small businesses, they're asking us these questions, and we get these questions from from stakeholders around downtown. We kind of took a smattering of businesses in different areas of different sizes and and tried to compare these. And I'm happy to, you know, run these numbers for any business and try to extrapolate what their D I D assessment might be and what their P B I current assessment is. We know what their P B I assessment is currently, the D I D number. It it's largely a function of if they have a triple net lease or not, two types of leases effectively, a triple net lease and a gross lease. And that triple net, all all the costs are coming down to them, likely, including this assessment. And a gross lease, none of those costs are coming down. There's modified gross and different things. But my observation, I don't have any numbers to prove this, but my observation is this town has a lot more gross leases than I'm used to seeing in triple than triple net leases. So but I, you know, this is kind of worst case scenario, if you will. So going through this, you know, art gallery workspace, we got, you know, a business that does six hundred seventy five square feet. The D I D annual assessment on that pro rata to the building size would be a hundred and seventy five dollars. Current P B I is two hundred. A cafe, three hundred and seventy seven, where it's seven hundred and fifty in the P B I. Specialty retail bumps up a little bit, two ninety one to two hundred. Boutique, around the same. Art gallery, again, it's largely variable on where those those are in the P B I and where they would be in the D I D. Four sixty to two fifty, a diner, eight eleven to seven fifty. We do have a bank there, and that is a ten thousand square foot bank. It is in the core area of the D I D, and the assessment would be thirty three hundred dollars. The current P B I assessment is six hundred dollars. So service wise, what would we be doing? We have been able to start to provide some of these services. Our, we had a contract last year to water flowering baskets with the P B I, so we hired a downtown maintenance worker. The idea was that we would be able to provide more street level cleaning services. In addition to that, watering flower baskets, turns out, is very time intensive and energy intensive. We've kind of improved the widget a little bit this year. We actually have a vehicle we'll be watering with, so we hope we can get more to more cleaning. But our board made a decision at the end of last year that they wanted to permanently fund that position, which allowed us then to be out there on the streets. I want to make the point that, you know, what we're doing out there with one downtown maintenance workers is really complementary of to what the clean team services are. As you all know, the clean team is kind of spread throughout the city and, you know, been tasked with taking on cleaning services throughout the city where once upon a time they were, you know, primarily, if not only downtown. They are still on the spot for calls for service. So whether, you know, you've got to sharpen a doorway or you've got, you know, other deposits in the doorway, they're there, and I I continue to hear that from small businesses. Where I think we complement and support that is just block by block painstakingly cleaning downtown. So that's our cleaning cart right there. So we have every tool that we need to clean. And, you know, I've talked to industry experts. There's an outfit called Block by Block out of Louisville, Kentucky, that has a hundred contracts for cleaning in downtowns across the nation and picking their brain about what do you do? How do you do business? Go up to Seattle, have conversations with them, Tacoma, and have conversations with them about how they're cleaning up their downtown, and so trying to employ best practices. So every tooling needs, whether it's pulling weeds, whether it's sweeping up trash, whether it's taking stickers off of, you know, public, public signs, cleaning parking meters with, you know, with rags, that sort of thing, cleaning up graffiti tags. So we do measure everything we do. So we have a collector app called Fulcrum, and every, you know, every action we take out there with our maintenance workers recorded. So you'll see there just a six month sample size. So we cleaned seventeen hundred block faces, so four block faces to one block. We blew nine hundred and fifty two, we removed an estimated fifty four hundred pounds of trash, removed almost two hundred stickers and almost three hundred tags in that time. I will say, some of this is supplemented by our partnership with Valeo, which thank you for funding that amazing program where Valeo puts to work houseless individuals in our community. And we had an intern for a nine week period that was out there with us, kind of working with us on the street. We're trying to get another intern right now, but really cool program. So some of those numbers are in there, too. So in terms of that level of service and what we talk to our property owners about and what we can deliver, this is in the core, so detailed cleaning passes, two to three times per week in the core. Limited power washing services, we we have started to do that. In fact, we power washed across the street. A couple of weeks ago, we're taking on one block face per week at this point. So cleaned in front of O C R and Family Theater. We did two 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 market a couple of days ago, Fifth Avenue before that. So that is just a night and day difference in our sidewalks when we're pressure washing them. It's it's really evident, but also really time intensive. So noncore detailed cleaning passes once per week with return passes to hotspots. You know, the collector app that we use geolocates and timestamps the cleaning so we know when and where things are happening. So if there are hotspots, we can track those. So services from a safe perspective, really for us, the idea would be continuing the level of service that we provide with our current downtown guide program, which is funded by contracts with property owners and small businesses in a twelve block area in the downtown core. This is, these are our numbers, same collector app that we use for our downtown guide encounters in two thousand twenty two. So largely friendly engagements with members of the public, customers, visitors to our downtown, greeting them, asking if they need directions, asking what they're looking for. We do homeless outreach out there as well, so seventeen hundred times. We provided food and water, so bottled water, granola bar, that sort of thing. Almost fourteen hundred times in two thousand twenty two, four hundred, almost four hundred referrals, social services. We do balance that with trespass engagement. So if a merchant is trying to open their store in the morning, we are engaging with that individual. I will say Colin and Kyle, our guides that are out there every day, and they're on four ten schedules that overlap on Saturdays. They're developing relationships, they know most of the individuals that are out there, which also helps when we're doing trespass engagement, if they have that relationship with that individual. So a level of service here in the core, walking services, four to five passes per per day. So really, every couple hours, we can, you know, touch every piece of property within downtown. Increased on Saturday, right now, the way we have our program structured, they overlap on Saturday. So we're seven A M. to eleven P M. We supplement with some bicycle services as well. Likely bicycle services in the noncore, not as much pedestrian traffic or intensity of use there, moving around quicker around that area. So assisting small businesses, so this was that other kind of bucket of money that that we talked about. And I I think, you know, this is a bucket that really, in conversations with our D I D Steering Committee and the deep future D I D possible board, this is flexible. So whether it's marketing, you know, trying to continue to bring people back downtown, retail, dining, theaters, you know, special events, so augmenting the events we already have, putting some more horsepower into some of those events, special projects. So this is the placemaking stuff that we had talked about earlier. And it's leveraging some of the projects that we're already doing, certainly some of the staff, which we'll talk about, ideas of small business training. But again, this this funding source is flexible. So some nuts and bolts, talked about the base level of service agreement. So we'll be receiving that soon from the city. Collection enforcement would go through the city, would be providing billing services for the D I D. The proposed term of the district is ten years with a five year formal evaluation. And a key point to this, so the formation of this requires petition support from property owners representing sixty percent of the total assessment. So if you've got a property owner with that six hundred and seventy five thousand dollar budget that their, you know, their assessment is six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, then they are, they equate to one percent of that overall assessment. So we need sixty. In terms of boundary adjustments, it would need to be made by ordinance of your body. Rate adjustments would be based on the C P I, program costs would be capped at an annual increase of five percent. And in the current inflationary environment, is the potential administrator, makes me a little nervous at five percent. Hopefully, we come down under five percent. What's that? Right, right, yeah, right, you're right. Fair point. So we'd be capped at five percent, obviously, our property owners, they're they're concerned about what that could look like. Anything over that would warrant city council action. So from a governance perspective, this is something, you know, Ron mentioned, the work that we've done this year, you know, on the operational plan, we did a lot of work in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, listening to our stakeholders, property owners, small businesses, city council, regarding the governance of the D I D. So it's kind of a Frankenstein governance structure here with a lot of different feedback that's come into it. I try to remind folks, too, the more columns we put in, the more difficult it gets. And my experience, you don't have people running to participate in something like this, but I I'm confident we can find who we need. So from a profile perspective, first of all, you've got two ex officios, a city representative and a downtown resident, certainly acknowledging the density that we're gaining in downtown from a residential perspective. We have ten property owners and five small business owners. I'll talk about a little bit more about that in a minute. There's there's geographic diversity there in terms of core and noncore within the district. So it's pretty evenly balanced there, I think, eight core, seven noncore. All I will note, I think it's important to note, sector wise, open means it can, you know, the property owner can be a business owner or not. For two of our property owners, we are dictating that they have to be business owners in downtown. So that means seven out of the fifteen need to be business owners that are participating on this. We also have an acknowledgement and, you know, really a intentional effort to get smaller business owners and smaller property owners under five thousand feet involved as well. So that's that's the governance structure. Management, the D I D would be governed by a board of directors, a D I D board of directors. The D I D board would develop an annual work program, budget, assessment rates. They would be in charge with monitoring the delivery of services and then submitting the package to the city as part of the budget process to the city manager. Downtown Alliance would serve as the district management corporation for the D I D. That allows, you're you're not creating a new organization from scratch. It's leveraging existing resources that we have in place right now. Our annual budget at this point is, on the expense side this year, about seven hundred and fifty thousand, up from about a hundred and seventy thousand in two thousand seventeen. So leveraging those resources that we have in place that aren't funded by the D I D. So really giving us more horsepower organizationally. So really just want to emphasize, from a governance perspective, diverse set of stakeholders on on the D I D board, voting representation from property and small business owners. And importantly, when we talk about the petition campaign, it is weighted, depending on how much a property owner owns and what their assessment looks like. From a governance perspective, it's not. It's one, one board member equals one vote. Make it the point also, leveraging the additional resources. So there's a lot of alignment when you put the P B I strategic plan and the D I D operations plan side by side. So a lot of conversations about clean and safe, small business. side. So a lot of conversations about clean and safe, small businesses, marketing, beautification, that sort of thing. We've talked about the budgets of those. And just wanted to share as well, so this is the Downtown Alliance Board of Directors currently. So the left-hand column is kind of the industry sector. You've got eight small business owners currently on the board. You've got a ninth in financial services, that's Ollie Fed, that's obviously a business as well, a couple of property owners, and a few nonprofits as well. So we've got a full, full board member capacity at 15, we've got 14 right now. And your assistant city manager also is ex officio on our board currently. So that leveraging piece organizationally for us, our priorities are clean and safe, image making, advocacy, economic development, and financial health. I feel like that really aligns with what property owners are looking for from the DID. Currently, we are staffed with myself, a full-time projects manager, half-time admin assistant, and three, we call it, street operations staff. We also leverage contract services. So we contract with Mosaic Marketing Studios for marketing services, a couple of different event providers for event management, and a bookkeeper. Some of our work plan highlights, let you know what we're up to this year. So a lovely brand expansion, expanding that lovely brand that's really been received well within the community. It will be our external-facing brand of the Alliance moving forward. So we're having that conversation in committee right now, what that looks like. Summerfest 2023, want to invite you all. Thank you for supporting through lodging tax dollars. So that is June 23rd to 25th. Kristin Green from Team Tomorrow, who did the South Sunblock Party last year and is doing it this year, is putting the music together for us and managing that. We just announced today, Blitz and Trapper and the Cave Singers, for any music people, are going to be there, really popular Northwest bands. So children's activities, we're going to do a drag brunch on Sunday morning. SPSEC is doing a tap takeover on Saturday. Anyway, I go on and on. Yeah. So we're also working on a vacant storefront pop-up program, which you're aware of, because you helped to fund that program. We appreciate that. Was working with the EDC on that and trying to get prospective entrepreneurs through today. So excited about that. Same thing with micro grants. Talked about the alley lighting project. We'll continue with our street operations, and obviously, the DID campaign is moving forward as well. I know that's a lot of information. Appreciate it.
Wow. Yes, yes. Especially for a couple of you that haven't gone through this before, that was, yeah, a lot to absorb. So I'm going to ask if Councilmember Wen and Payne have questions first. Councilmember Wen.
Funny you ask. Councilmember Payne and I have actually had the opportunity to be brief, just a level-setted meeting on this before. And as well, I attended the last PBI meeting. And so I feel myself quite familiar with this presentation. So, good job, Todd.
You can make it next time, Councilmember.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. Anyone down the line? Councilmember Payne?
Yes. Thank you, Todd, for the presentation. I wanted to ask you something that I believe I asked you before when you gave us this presentation. But I want to ask you it in this meeting, because I want folks to hear your response to the question that you gave me, which is, I believe I asked you something like, on your slide, where you had cities like Seattle and Everett. If you were to make your pitch for the DID, why would you refer to those cities? For example, if folks say, well, I've been to Seattle and Everett, and I know what it looks like. So how are we going to benefit from a DID? Could you please respond to that?
Sure. Great question. So up and down the High Five Corridor, West Coast, et cetera, obviously, we're having challenges with our houseless population, mental health subsidies. I know you all are grappling with those issues. You know, I would make the case that without services of the Metropolitan Improvement District in downtown Seattle, you know, what they're doing in Tacoma and Everett, a lot of those challenges would be a lot more evident in their towns. And I think the cleanliness levels would probably rank lower in their towns. We have a little microcosm of that here, and that I think is scalable, and that's our Downtown Guide program, also the Downtown Ambassador program, and our Clean Team with the on-call services and the maintenance worker. So, you know, the conversation I have is, we need to do better downtown generally, and I think all of us in partnership. But without a resource like this, the challenges would be greater with the level of services that we have currently. But with what we can do and what we can scale with the DID, I think we can really improve upon those things.
All right. I've got Councilmember Medron, and then back to Councilmember Wen.
Yeah, I have a question about the base level service agreement. So essentially, it's like, the city is currently providing those, these services, and those aren't going to go away. And I'm asking about it because I'm curious around flexibility. You know, you just talked about how Clean Team was downtown. Now it's across the city, and we often have to scale our services, allow them to evolve. And so what kind of flexibility will be built into a base level service agreement so that we can continue to respond to issues downtown and across the city with our, with the resources that we have?
That one may actually be more for me to answer. So I'll, I'll pull it this way. So we did finalize a baseline service level of agreement in 2019. And ultimately, what it says is, this is, this is everything that we do downtown. It does put in there, as Todd had mentioned, there are caveats in it that ultimately do say, things can change. What the document really needs to be able to articulate is, we are not intentionally going to pull these services because now you're going to do them because you're paying for them. So the concern is that we're, let's say, we've got Clean Team, okay? And as soon as the property owners pass a Downtown Improvement District, we pull it away, and now they have to bring it back up. And so they didn't improve on the overall cleanliness levels of downtown. So right now, I don't, it's not a contractually binding agreement. It is something that recognizes this is what we are doing. It doesn't have a sort of a recourse associated with it. But it is very clear that we state our intentions of this is what we do, and our stated intention is to keep this level of service in downtown even after you would pass a DID. But it does say in there that sometimes we have to do things differently, and sometimes there's budget constraints. I think in that instance, then we're just talking about being in a good partnership with the organization to be able to articulate why it is that we would have to make a change and what change it is that we're doing. The reality is, they're both, we, they're sympathetic goals. The Alliance would want us to be able to have a clean and safe downtown, and we also want that. So I don't think there's ever a concern that we're going to be pulling something away just to take it away. But there is a concern from property owners. I think that we're looking at this as a mechanism to replace the commitments that we have already made. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's really kind of the thinking with it.
Yeah, I think it does. It sounds like, it sounds like, you know, we're giving assurance that we're still invested in downtown, but also retaining the ability to be flexible as issues change in the community, as our resources change, as, you know, as we see things pop up in other areas of the city. Yeah?
Yes. And we do have to articulate, and that's what's going on with the baseline service level right now. It's why we didn't just take 2019's that was already signed and said, hey, this is what we said we'd do for you in 2019, we'll continue to do it. Because we have added new programs, we've modified programs. The last time when we did the 2019 service agreement, we didn't have a homeless response department. Now we do. So there's a whole new kind of service that is being deployed by the city. We didn't have a crisis response unit to the same degree that we had when we did the last one. Now we do. So we recognize that those things have to change. And the cover letter to the agreement clearly articulates that.
I'm just going to add to what Mike was sharing, that cities evolve. They are either growing or dying, improving or getting worse. And the profile of our downtown is going to change as more residents are downtown. So I like to think that the type of services that the city is providing are going to complement what DID is and vice versa. And it's always dynamic. Thus, the city's representation on the DID Board, always staying aware, what can we do better? How can we leverage each other's service? And I'll give you a little 30-year history lesson on this. When I came from Boston to Tacoma and had my large firm up there, that was 30 years ago. That was the beginning, and I'm going to get the dates wrong, but of the Tacoma DID. Fast forward now 30 years, Union Station, U-Dub, Foss Waterway, all the museums, none of that was there. You can imagine the Tacoma DID has changed a great deal over that time. And you ask the question, what would it be like, or if it wasn't there? Todd mentioned that. And so we have matured as a city to the point where we need this. I'll just leave it with that. Yeah.
Thank you.
I was going to just real quickly say, having been the person who's been on the front lines with the property owners, this was probably one of the number-one concerns that came up to me from property owners is, if we agree to tax ourselves to clean up downtown, and the city pulls back all their services, you've, eventually, you've basically tricked us into paying for everything that the city should be doing. So we talked to our consultant, and he said, this is a standard practice when people set up DIDs. Do you do this base level service agreement? Obviously, it's not binding, but you can give the property owners an assurance that you're going to go into this as a partner, and not as someone who's going to pull out once you've got them to sign the bill. Yeah.
All right. Next, I have Councilmember Wen, followed by Councilmember Partially Remotely.
So the benefit of my colleagues that weren't in the room with Councilmember Payne and I, I had some areas of interest and concern. I think overall, I think this is something that's really exciting, it's a really exciting possibility. And I do really want to honor all of the work that everyone has put into it thus far, folks that are not even with the project anymore, right? And how, how much of a delicate dance, I'm sure it was, to try to get so many different types of stakeholders on board, both on the small business and actual PBI members, and then also folks that are different types of property owners and different nonprofit stakeholders and the like on the Steering Committee. Some of those areas of concerns were the two questions that you asked us in the beginning that we will not be answering tonight. So I do wondering about the one, number one, I suppose. And I did have a concern if that would look like, well, are we being a little shifty? Are we saying we're going to say yes to something? And then what if we turn around and it can't be something we can say yes to? And that's just in wanting to be, to be fair and above board, really. Though, I would hate to think that you would ask us to do anything but. And then something else I think about a lot is about the small business voice. And so I do want to recognize that I believe there's been, one of the changes to this presentation is probably the structure and makeup of the DID Board, should it go forward. So it is now, looks like small business, or I guess business owner, would be a third, like roughly a third, it looked like, from what I could see. And then there was, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, yes, strictly business owners. And then two of the property owners, it's required that they're business owners, too. So we do have owner occupied. We have one sitting next to us here, you know, Archibald Sisters would be, yeah, there are plenty of examples down here. But yeah, so seven out of the 15.
Okay. Yeah, actually, so more. And then also recognizing that, just like council is some new faces, there's a lot of new faces on the PBI. So for me, it's going to be very important that PBI members are strongly on board. And then that's a tough thing, because for everyone that's been working on it for so long, I'm sure there's probably some thought like, oh, let's get this done, right? And then, and then for some folks, this is a new thing. Like, what does it mean? You know? And then there's a little bit of that myth-busting, I think, that goes on with folks, too, probably on the property side, and definitely on the small business side, where they, bit of the fear of the unknown, what could happen, right? So that is a thought. And then also, oh, one of the biggest eyesore to me is a vacant building. It could be perfectly intact, looks shiny and new, but no one's in it, and it just irks me. So those are, those are my areas of interest. And I'm really interested to hear the conversation and the unfold of my colleagues. Thanks.
If I could address just a couple of those points. So just to clarify, too, from vacant space perspective, all properties would pay, whether they're vacant or not. So essentially, you know, those property owners, they'd be paying, they wouldn't be recouping any of those costs for their vacant space. Another point I wanted to make, in addition, you know, to representation from a governance perspective, would be, I've had conversations with my counterparts in Seattle, Tacoma, Spokane, and all of them, you know, operate, they are subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. So they are noticing meetings, they are holding open public meetings. And we would intend to, we haven't talked to your city attorney yet, but we would intend to do the same. I'm sure they would say that it's a requirement, but we would do the same.
I was just going to add, we certainly hope that some of the PBI Board members would actually slide on over to the DID. And I know a frustration of some PBI Board members, they just wish they had more money to do the great things that they have been thinking about for the past, how long has PBI been up? 20, 30 years?
Oh, no, no, no. It was like 2005?
It just, they always wish they had more money to work with. Well, here's an opportunity for them. So, yeah.
All right. I've got Councilmember Partially on the screen.
Hi, guys. From quarantine, I'm outdoors, so I can leave my mask behind. I would love it, Todd, or one of the other Steering Committee members, if you could highlight to the council the successes in Tacoma in terms of the most recent reassessment and expansion.
So Ron's probably a better expert on this, but I haven't got a chance to talk much. So I want to get a chance to get a few words in here. Todd was supposed to let me speak at the end, but we just, sorry. No. So one of, one of the members of our Steering Committee is Shannon Teague, who's a property manager, who is also on the board of the Steering Committee up in Tacoma. And not only has she seen wonderful success up there, but they recently, just a couple of years ago, voted to double the size of their DID. Because what they noticed up there, and is what we expect to see here in Olympia as well, is once the folks inside the service area see the expanded level of street sweeping and pressure washing and events and beautification, that the people on the outside of the area will go, we want to get in on that. That's creating additional value in those properties. The tenants want to be in those buildings. And hopefully, down the road, we'll be able to expand this to a larger area from downtown. But yeah, in talking to our consultant about these, I believe 98% of these are renewed when they come up for renewal, five or 10 years down the road. And we asked, with the pandemic, what happened? Was there any change in these services when they came up for review? Did people say, well, interest rates are way up, property taxes are way up, we're going to cancel this? And he said, no, they have seen even higher percentage of renewals because these are now seen as frontline services. You know, during the pandemic, these people were still out serving the community, doing the cleanup that was necessary. And there's still a ton of value in these services.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Partially.
Can I just add one, one more thing? In the Steering Committee, having the Chair of PBI be represented has been extremely helpful. To go to Councilmember Wen's point, I too feel like we need to get a consensus, or not 100% consensus potentially, of the PBI going forward. But I thought that the ODA bringing in the Chair of our PBI was excellent this time around.
Thank you for that context. Anybody else? I've got Mayor Protam Gilman.
Thank you. So I had concerns, you know, a couple of years ago, when we were looking at this, about the privatization, essentially, of having a taxing district that the people who are taxed control. But I'll also say that over the last three years, this downtown has proved so remarkably resilient, and actually more than held its own, and is brighter-lit, more muraled, more active. You know, there's parked up to 90% on Friday nights, right? I mean, you know, it's happening. So I'm interested in any way that we can put another 600,000 towards furthering those efforts right now. One small question I have- One small question I have, and I know we talked about this last time, is the balance between the city doing the collection and enforcement, legal review, that sort of work, and asking the city to be a contributing property owner. And I'll just be interested, as we move along, in seeing some, at least back of the napkin numbers of, I don't want us to spend more than the program makes, and I have, but I have no idea of what those relative costs are. And I'm interested to see that. But I, I just, just want to acknowledge the, the work that's been done in spite of the pandemic and the remarkable progress downtown, so.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to get on the back of the mayor Protam's comments, because you all are doing amazing work, like it, not just individually, but collectively, and like to see all of you stick with our downtown through probably one of the hardest things that ever hit, or will ever hit us. And, and it's because of everyone's contribution, but also because of the foundation we laid together prior to that, right? Like the, the public investments, we're sitting in, you know, Patty Shop, the lot, and the Percival Landing, you know, that little over $100 million created a really great foundation to bounce off of to where we are today. And I honestly don't think we'd be back at these kind of numbers if we hadn't been doing this work for like 20 years, right? Like when was downtown 1.0 at the city council with Councilmember Langer leading it at least 15 years ago? And, and so it's been exciting to see the, the alliance grow and do really great stuff. So I just want to say that and, and put that on the record. And to the mayor Protam's point, we have to figure out how to maintain the level of service, right? Like we've created a new level of service with, with our federal funds that we've been so blessed to receive. And, and so how do we keep that so that we can continue to promote and grow, grow what's going on downtown? I think that, you know, to me, I think about the two questions, and the, the success in the second question is about the co-design upfront. And, and so to me, in a, in a, in a perfect world, you've got a city council, steering committee, plus the alliance, plus the PBIA, you know, vote that says, we're all on board, we're all doing this, the majority of our groups agree that this is the formula, and then we go out and do our assessment. You know, so for me, if we can do that and get to that point, you know, by July or August, and maybe we can, based on, on where people are, I think it would have the best chance of success. So if, if we say as a council with four or more votes, we agree to this recipe, then we'll abide by it if, if, if you get the 60%. My gut says that the administrative portion and the current investments are the city's investment in the DID. So I, it would be nice to see numbers both ways, so that we can really understand what the impact of that would be if we didn't pay an additional assessment. The, I think cleanliness is a big thing for me too, like just looking at the DIDs that you've posted and talked about, and the downtowns I've been around, ours is pretty awesome cleanliness wise. And so I'd love to see data around, does anyone have better than a third? And if they do, what does it look like? To your point, though, in the last five years, it would have been a lot worse if we didn't have the kind of investments that we've had. The, you know, I think the piece for me that stands out, that's not there, is promotion. I don't think that we're going to get state employees back in, in the way that we had them before. And if we don't have that base population coming downtown, our residents aren't going to backfill that number, right? It's not enough. And if we don't have that, if we don't figure out a special sauce for bringing people down, we have to readjust to a new size of normal. And, and so to me, at three quarters of that budget should be promotion. Obviously, we can't get behind on, on, on clean and safe, and, and we've got to find ways to augment that. But we've got to figure out how to promote a great thing and tell the story we're all telling together in a bigger way. And so that's like my, I think my one rub is, let's all chip in on the cleanliness like we used to, and, and let's, let's spend money bringing people downtown and telling a broader story of that. So, and then my, just like, sort of, I think my, my side question, and I know Todd will have, have thoughts, but, and I want, I do look forward to getting together with you all, I want to talk about this more, is how have the residents of downtown been involved in the development of this? Because we have a lot of new ones, and it's great to see their voice on the board, but I don't know what they want. Other than, we have a survey in the field, or will soon, that will tell us some segregation, but I think, that might not be the right word, some, some smaller subset of the population and what they want. But do we know that, and is there a way to incorporate that voice before we go too much further into the design?
I'm going to respond to that last question, in that we have a very nice pipeline to what residents, what their thoughts are. Urban management just happens to be voted the best management provider. Jesse Wilson happens to be on our advisory team, our steering committee, and that question has been asked repeatedly, how do your residents feel about, a variety, so we're getting a constant feedback. And of course, they're one of the larger property owners, so this is no small decision for them, and they have committed to supporting this. So I do feel like we're getting feedback from residents, and we'll continue to try to do that, and you've noticed that they are on the advisory team going forward.
So I guess follow up on that, like they're having their residents answer these survey questions, or contribute to what they would like to see downtown?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, that's something we survey, and we're interested because we design the buildings. What can we do differently? How that building meets the street? Are they feeling safe? What can we do better? You'll notice our buildings happen to be well lit at night. Okay, it's nice visually, but it has a lot to do with safety. And I'm a big proponent in Christopher Alexander's public space semi-public, semi-private and private. I want to make it very clear when somebody's welcome and where they're not, because you're on private property. And so just subtle things like that. So we do try to keep our fingers on the pulse of the residents, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Wen.
Just hearing this conversation, will you refresh my memory, how much residence, resident representation would be on the advisory? I only saw one, and that was non-voting.
Since it is a property owner assessment, it's important that we not sway too much away from property owners. So you saw, I think, as many as seven, it could be just business owners, not property.
Right, right.
And so, yeah, that was important.
Right, and property owners want to have happy tenants, too.
Exactly.
So that's where their feedback comes in.
Exactly.
And I want to leave space for other folks. Yeah, and so, yes. And also, you know, just like, if you and I are going grocery shopping and we're spending our own money, we want to pick our own ingredients, right? So I get that. And also because there is a resident, one on there, and it's non-voting, I do wonder, is there the possibility of getting more than one? Because at the end of the day, they are non-voting, and I mean, you know, look to our community, resident opinion is all over the place, you know? So I just think of like, how would we pick that one person? So, yeah, so just a thought.
Yeah, good questions, and we can certainly take it back to the steering committee and have the conversation. We do have, you know, our own kind of subject matter expert in our consultant that has set these up and renewed these across the nation. So I'm, I'm curious what, how he would answer that question, too. So something we can take back.
Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on what Jim was asking or saying around promoting downtown, and it just made me think, like, what, outside of this body of work, should this DID be funded or approved? Like, what kind of, like, the ODA plays a pretty strong role in promotions for downtown, and I assume you would continue to do that. So I guess, you know, just what is the base level of service that we would continue to see from ODA around what you've, what you've been doing for a while now?
So the good news for us is, you know, the budget that we have currently, we're spending on currently, it'll be there. This doesn't take away from that. So we would build upon that. We do have infrastructure in place. You know, there, I mentioned that we currently contract with a third-party mosaic marketing, and they are a soup to nuts, you know, contractor that does, does it all for us. There could be decisions down the road if we have increased level of resources of bringing dedicated staff members on in-house, who, you know, there aren't a number of clients, it's us, and all they're doing is downtown. But if we continue with the same structure, certainly, it's just more fuel for, for the engine for us. So, yeah, we're leveraging what we're already doing out there.
Thanks for bringing that up. That was on one of my bullet points to ask about, was the continuing mission of the ODA will be funded and continuing, and that's where a lot of the promotion goes.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then you made another good point, Councilmember Madron, but you made it already, so I don't need to. So here's a different one. How many new jobs do you think the DID will create? Not, there's one for management, but there's this ripple effect, because you're going to be utilizing a lot of subcontractors as well to do all the, the work.
So I know from a street operation staff perspective, we're looking, we're modeling eight full-time equivalents right now. Yeah. And, you know, I would also expect from an administrative perspective, we have a halftime admin right now, that may go up from there, as I mentioned, as we leverage these funds against what we already have. We may make decisions about the amount of work that we have may warrant more, you know, employees internally. Spinoff from that, contractors, I'd have to think about that. I don't have an answer off the top of my head.
Okay, I just know that, that working with the service provider, and I just blanked on their name, that are working with our folks at Quince, Quint Street, that company?
Vallejo.
Vallejo, yes.
Yes.
So I think that's a great part of this story, is that there's, you know, a opening door for, for folks that are work, that are working homeless, and so I just.
We'd love to continue that program. It's been a huge success.
Heard wonderful things. And then, we, yeah, we talked about how this would continue the great work around the ARPA dollars that we were, that we were able to implement in a partnership with all of, you know, our downtown. This would fill the gap in that funding that's going to go away, in a way that's proven now. This is not, I was making notes about, you know, sometimes, I don't know how to put it, but sometimes a catastrophe such as the pandemic really caused a pause that is benefiting us in a big way, because now you're coming back with a proven model of what the DID could do, because we had ARPA dollars. And, and so, and I think the product that you're presenting to us is landing in a different way because of that with this council. And so I feel really encouraged that we are moving in a great path. I think what I'm hearing from this council is that we want you to move forward as a consensus, we're not voting, but the path you're on is one I feel like we're pretty comfortable with. And so look forward to, to what you bring back to us next time, and how we can help.
Thank you for mentioning the ARPA dollars and the investment that we made over the last three years. And that is, to me, the biggest difference between where we were when you had this conversation last time and where we are now. There was a very early mantra statement that we made at the very beginning of 2020, when the, when COVID hit, and that was, as a city, we cannot manage this crisis by ourselves. We cannot be there for every individually impacted business, and we cannot be there for every individually impacted person. The crisis was too large for us to be able to be that source for every single person. So what we had to do was find a way to partner and amplify the, the, the resources there over the course of the last three years now. I'd have to add all the, add it all up, but I think about, we would have probably contracted with the Olympia Downtown Alliance in total over the last three years, and that includes the most recent that we just brought to you. My guess is it's probably about $450,000 to $500,000 total. So what you're looking at in this is to take that amount and do it every year plus, which is pretty, that, that's going to move a needle. Because I feel like we moved a needle with $400,000 or $500,000 doled out over three years during a pandemic. What does that look like when you do $500,000 a year, every year, not in a pandemic? So I just, there's some scale there, I think it's worth thinking about.
I found one more bullet point, and then we'll wrap, I'll put a bow on it. We talked about how are we going to get people back downtown with all the remote work, workforce that is not returning? And we've already felt an impact, especially around our, our lunchtime, our restaurants and, and the vitality during, during the day. You know, I'm sure you've all been following this, because we're not unique in that regard with downtowns, but, you know, it's like, how do downtowns reinvent themselves going forward? And it's, it's gearing towards, you know, making more of an entertainment district, right? That doesn't do, you know, it doesn't solve the daytime puzzles, but, you know, also what has happened in the last three years since we last sat with you, or two and a half years, was we now have a creative district designation, which is still kind of being developed. But again, it's to bring people downtown. We have a freeway sign, which is great. So we're really hopeful for wayfinding and, and things to direct people to at some point. But as well, we have Inspire Olympia, which is $2.5 million a year, for a long time, hopefully. And that, there's a big nexus between downtown and those dollars. So I'm really excited about, you know, those kinds of possibilities and coordination. So I'll leave it at that, unless there's anything else that anybody else has for, okay? So next steps?
So went over in the timeline a little bit, right now, it's us talking to property owners, continuing to seek support and drive towards a 60%. I, I feel very optimistic about that. We'll also be coming back to the PBIA with updates, and at some point, asking for their recommendation to bring back to you all, finance committee, and then back to council for hopefully the support to sign the petition and the authorization for the city manager.
All right, so you have what you need from us for tonight? Excellent, all right. So with no further business or no further work for this work session, we're adjourned.